Okay, good evening everybody. Tonight is the, what day is today? December 12th. We've got a few hearings scheduled for tonight. Before we get into those, at the beginning of each meeting, we have a public comment section. If you have any opinions or statements you want to make about something that doesn't have anything to do with the hearings that we're about to hear or review, if you can raise your hand and come up to the podium and we'll start with you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Steve Callahan, living at 824 Birds Pit Road. I sent all of you a letter on Monday. I don't know if you've seen them. I had some problem delivering my first letters. But I requested an appeal of your decision to approve the amendment to the Birds Bog Plan on October 24th. I submitted that on the 12th of November, so it's been listed on your agenda and have a chance to talk about it. It never showed up on your agenda. I looked at the agenda today, didn't show up again. I received no communication from anyone, but I just want to enter the facts that I sent on to you in the letter, and these are facts, these are not my opinions. The number one fact is that the mayor, Mr. Fied, signed off on lots 1, 2, and 10 before the purchase even occurred. So they never had a 10 lot plan. They were in control of seven lots. They produced a 10 lot plan and asked you to vote on it before they even purchased it. Okay? The 10 lot plan happened to include lots 1, 2, and 10. Those ones, they had no control. And coincidentally, when the plan came back for water management, lots 1, 2, and 10 were listed, and nobody had known them, and they prevented any building at all going on in lots 3 to 8. I know that's hard to believe. Okay? But it happened. Okay? A few other things in terms of the whole project. Okay? I think it's called, what, an open space cluster development? I've got a letter from the director, the assistant director, saying you need a four acre minimum to qualify that. Four. They only had, well, they claimed they had 2.67, but once you take out the three lots that they gave away before they purchased, you're down to about 1.82 acres, less than half. Okay? But it was approved. Okay? Then, they came back for an amendment, and if you think an amendment, at least from the people I've talked to, changes the total number of units, okay, from 13 goes into zoning that would require two lots on the single zoning area, I mean, that's more than, I think, a minor adjustment to the plan. Finally, on the recommendation, Mr. Mish, you approved three houses to, and lots, I think they're all three, the back of the bog. You approved them as accessory apartments upon this missus' recommendation. My understanding is, an accessory apartment is owner occupied. Owner occupied, not a six-unit development at the back of the bog. They were approved individually, okay? Not in a meeting because somebody pointed at us, "That's an accessory lot." Three of them, they're there, okay? But, so, all of these things, bang, bang, bang. They look terrible. They don't look terrible, they smell terrible, all the way down the line. And if you can say, "Okay, don't worry about it. We'll take half the size for a cluster lot. Don't worry about it. We'll approve accessory housing, even if it's not owner occupied." Because you trust in the people who, I mean, believe you. I've been confused as heck on all of these things I'm trying to find and catch up on. Okay? You've got to be able to trust the people who come to you with recommendations. You add this to the fact that there was a quote-unquote, "I'm going to call it a secret meeting." That was when Ms. Mish deliberately left off the agenda item that the transfer, you're going to transfer some units from Emerson Way, high on the hill, and you're going to transfer them to the back of Birds Bog, and Birds Bog was never mentioned. The specific listing was, "We're going to transfer units, period, and then at Emerson Way." Okay? It was deceptive. There's been nothing but deceptive actions. A couple of people have been injured. When I say injured, damaged, I'm talking about losing thousands of dollars, and lawyers trying to fight this mess, okay? As well as probably going without sleep for a year and a half of the aggravation of what they're going through. People have been hurt. And the votes continually, the votes on this lot don't line up with the laws. They don't line up with the city's policies. And I would ask, before any money's changed, because it's going to be a whole different game once you start swapping money, okay? And somebody has financial gain, I ask you to reconsider this. Okay? Put it on the shelf, find out what's going on, ask some questions. Okay? I know you people are here as volunteers and you work, I've sat through several of your meetings and I've sat through videos of others. I appreciate the effort you put in, and there's always going to be somebody, two people come in, "I want this, I don't want this," and there's always going to be somebody upset. I mean, and I know that you have to sort of deal with that, but this goes way beyond that. It goes way beyond that. Okay? I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you, George.
Anybody else with comments not related to the hearings that we had for tonight?
Oh, excuse me. Could I get a response to the two letters of appeal that I sent? We'll discuss it the next week. That's where I'd like, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No.
Mark, before we start the meeting, can I just ask briefly, Carolyn, I read Mr. Kaling's letter fairly carefully, and it makes obviously a huge number of allegations. I have no clue what's accurate and what isn't, but is there any response or any compending? Or what does the planning department say about it all? Or is that too big a subject to even ask about?
It's not too big a subject to ask. I don't think there's a big answer necessarily. I think that first letter came, it was just a memo, so it's not an appeal. An appeal is an official action taken in court.
So there's no pending appeal? There's nothing that's been appealed?
No. So this week, at the beginning of the week, Mr. Callahan submitted the second letter that he was referencing, and when I immediately emailed him, so that was on Monday, to let him know that there wasn't an appeal because the appeal procedure doesn't, the planning board doesn't hear an appeal to itself. The appeal has to go somewhere else. So I clarified that, but he didn't respond to my email at all. So, but I just wanted to make sure he understood what that process was. But no, there are a lot of, I mean, clearly, there's a lot of information in the memo that has come from different bits and pieces and hasn't really been, is confusing because there were lots of parts to this project. But as you know, the whole cluster development was part of over, I think, 117 acres to begin with to create the 10 lots. So there's, I think, just a lot of misunderstanding about the project itself.
And certainly, I remember when we were hearing about kind of moving up a couple of the former housing lots across the street, and it was pretty straight out that they were being moved over to this new little area.
Right.
So that too, you know, wasn't a secret meeting at all, it was a public hearing.
Although that may have been maybe one of the meetings he claims he was never notified about. I mean, I'm not suggesting we get into a this big discussion. I just don't, I feel bad. I mean, he obviously has put a huge amount of time in, in good faith, even if he's wrong, I don't know, but feels like he's entitled in some way to some response, maybe?
Right. Well, that was my response in email. So, and asked him, you know, I asked him to, you know, give me a call if he wanted more clarification.
So what he just asked for tonight, for us to appeal his appeal, we're not the board that he should be appealing to?
Right. It's a formal process, and that's not asking for us to...
Appeal, right. So it was a formal process, and you appeal it, but you don't appeal it to the board that...
That made the original...
That made the original, but he hasn't got that clarification for whatever reason.
Well, that's what I sent to him earlier in the week.
Is it any, I mean, is it any violation of open meeting laws for you to CC us on that so that we know what has been communicated to him in terms of what that appeal process is, so that, I mean, because I'm assuming everybody else did too. I got letters at my home.
Yeah.
It's a little worrisome, the thought of being, you know, I mean, we're not free, as I understand it, to speak with him about it if he sees us on the street or whatever. I would like to be able to know that, like, he got, like, and say that he got the appeal, that I know what appeal process education he got.
Yeah. I can CC you the email, but it's not going to, I mean, I could, so first, let me take step back. There's no violation of open meeting because the permit's done.
Right.
You can talk to anybody about anything about that process. And I can certainly send you the email that I sent. He had come into our office many times to get information and to ask for addresses for current planning board members, past planning board members, and we tried to clarify at that point that past planning board members don't play a role in any decisions, it's just the board members that are sitting. But then, of course, after each decision, a postcard is sent to the butters indicating, you know, clearly what the appeal dates are, when they start, when they finish, and then what sections of state statute you appeal under. So no, we don't go through a long laundry list of how the steps you take, but it's listed there under the state statute how you make that appeal.
Okay. Yeah, it would just be helpful.
Yeah. And that goes to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some issue, though, that he believed he was in a butter, but maybe didn't fall within the notice requirement? He personally, or a number of people he was speaking on behalf of?
Right. So he actually was notified, even though he's technically not a party of interest under the state statute, but because we notified more people than who are technically required to be notified. But on the, maybe the, I don't know, but the, he was outside of that notification requirement for the Emerson Way piece. So he did not get personal notification of that, although we have the yellow signs to sort of, to have be posted on the public way, so if anyone who's interested about stuff going on gets noticed that way. But, so I don't know if he was representing that as related to the secret meeting claim.
Yeah.
But he was definitely outside the notification ring for that one.
You ready for this, Dave?
Yeah, I know. We started it, so. Okay, let's start tonight. So we have our first hearing scheduled for 7 o'clock for Pioneer Habitat for Humanity for a special permit amendment to waive tree replacement for purposes of providing solar access to a residence for 115 Glendale Road map ID 42-179. Do we have somebody to speak on this?
I'm Megan McDonough, Executive Director of Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity. And I previously came before the board for, this is a four-unit development, and three of the houses share a common driveway, and then this fourth house is on its own frontage block on Glendale Road. We thought this lot we would be building on much later, but we got to it sooner than we had anticipated. So I am coming with the same request that I had for the back lots, which is that we cut down, it was pine forest essentially, so we cut down a number of large trees to make a space for this solar zero-energy house that we're going to be building. And two of those are to the south of the house, so would have blocked solar access. And under the tree replacement bylaw, there is an exemption for the tree replacement requirement if the reason you're cutting it down is for solar access for a zero-net energy house, and there's also a public benefit like affordable housing. And all Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity's homes are permanently protected as affordable housing. So it's really documentation that we had from our Hearst Rager that it has the potential to reach zero net energy with the designs that we have. We had the trees measured, and a couple of them were discarded because they were hazard trees, which you can confirm with an arborist. And the remaining trees would have, there's 143 inches of breast-type diameter of trees that we cut down. And two of those trees, which represented 26 inches and 24 inches, were to the south of the house. So we're asking for a reduction in the requirement for replacement trees after removing those two trees from the calculation.
The question that the, the plan calls, it has the potential for the buildings to be net zero. Does that mean they could if we designed it that way, but it gives you an out, maybe not to design it that way? Or is it designed for net zero, and if these trees come down, it will be net zero?
We designed it for net zero. I always couch that language a little bit because it depends on the occupants of the house. So we should be able to achieve a home energy rating index at the time of construction completion that's net zero, but I can't promise that the homeowner will live in it in a way that's net zero.
Right.
And we have applied for a building permit with the designs for the energy efficiency level that we're talking about.
I'm sorry, is this a clarification? So if someone, you're supposed to live in the house in a particular way to get net zero? I didn't know.
So net zero just means that you're going to generate as much electricity as you use?
Yeah, that, that part.
So if you're someone who has six fish tanks and 20 big screen TVs and likes the heat at 80 degrees, even if you have solar panels, it's not going to be net zero.
But if someone has an average...
That's what the home energy rating is for, is sort of a, it's an average, so it's a calculation of an average user with average set points using the actual energy features of that house. So the efficiency of the equipment that we're installing, the insulation levels, the airtightness of the building, and they're modeling that, okay, an average user could make this net zero.
So when all of that is contingent or dependent upon having these solar arrays?
Right.
So the solar arrays will be constructed and will be verified right at the time of a build, an accuracy of...
Yep. And I included a letter from PV Squared, which is the solar installation company that we plan to work with and has worked with us on the other lots on this property.
Have we, in the past, just following what George is saying, made a condition? I mean, to me, this meets, the two exemptions are net zero and affordable housing, which this checks off both of those boxes, but for the sake of argument, if we cut the tree down and then something happens and they decide not to pursue PV...
So we can, yeah.
So you can make that a condition?
Then they would just have to do tree replacement, essentially. Right? So you're waiving it, they're waiving, they're asking a waiver from replacing trees because they're going to accomplish this net zero.
Right.
And if they decide not to install the solar panels and they can't get there, then that means they have to do tree replacement.
So, but the design has solar panels on it?
Right.
And so would we need to make that a condition? Or if they decided not to do that, they'd have to come back and ask for a change?
Well, good question. Probably the latter, actually, because if they didn't, you're right, if they didn't...
Right, so for you?
Yeah. If you're putting the plan that has the solar panels on it, yeah.
Any questions from the board?
So for the last, for the last time this came, we let it go forward because of the two, the two, it met both requirements, right? I'm just trying to remember what we did for the last, because I feel like we had this debate about the tree versus the solar.
Right.
But in this situation, since two versus one, you said yes?
Right. All right. Any other questions about the board? Okay, we'll leave this open. We'll just take any public comment. Is anybody here from the public who wishes to comment on this? No? Okay. Any discussion? Like, say, to me, this is, this is what we're advocating. Yeah, these are, this is why the exemptions are there, and it needs both of them, so.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion? Another motion? George, you're on the roll.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve Pioneer Habitat Humanities Application for Special Permit Amendment to Waive Tree Replacement for Purpose of Providing Solar Access to a Residence, ID 115 Glendale Road, map ID 42179.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next up is a continuation from October 10 of the request of Benjamin Lewis for 15 residential units at 34 Dewey Court. So the applicant has asked for a withdrawal without prejudice, which means if they want to, they can bring it back.
Right. They can bring the same plan back within two years, or substantially similar in two years.
Without having to do another fee of the...
No. So actually, with prejudice means they can't, they can't come back for two years with the same plan. They can't come back unless they change the plan substantially.
Got it.
Without prejudice means, you know, they're just, they're asking to be pulled off the table, and if they come back within two years, they expect it.
So if we just withdrew, it's with prejudice?
You really...
Technically, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if we just withdrew it, that was the second one.
Well, most people would prefer to withdraw without prejudice, just to leave that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just...
Question, Carolyn, since we spent so many hours listening to this issue, are you free to say what has happened, or is that not something for a public meeting?
No. I mean, it's, there, you, you may know, maybe from, I think you all know already that the, there were two permits. There was a zoning board permit and a planning board permit. The zoning board permit has been appealed. So initially, the applicant, and that's why there were several continuations, because the applicant was trying to figure out, you know, what to do. So at this point, you know, they are withdrawing and trying to sort of sort through that. We do have, there is a modification, there is an issue in the zoning ordinance that was highlighted in this appeal, so it's a conflict, an internal conflict in the zoning. So, you know, we're going to move forward to correct that conflict because it's basically a circular argument that sort of negates the whole point of having that section. So, you know, I think that there'll be another application potentially.
So are they withdrawing the ZDA?
Well, they don't need to because that was decided. So the...
Not the appeal?
I don't know what they're doing on that front. I have no idea.
So they may come back, or more than likely.
Yeah.
So, moving on, we actually have five minutes.
Do we have to...
Oh, do we have, yes, sorry.
I move to approve the withdrawal of, or do we have to close public hearing?
You have to close.
Yeah, I've moved to close public hearing.
Second, George. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion?
I move to approve the withdrawal of the permit on Dewey Court without prejudice.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. So we have a couple of minutes until 7:30, which is the next hearing. Do we have any A and Rs?
Yes. We have two A and Rs.
Are you folks here for something else? Here, here. We're just here to...
I'm sorry, sir.
We're just here for Dewey Court to listen as to what's going on, but I do have a question, if I can ask a question.
Sure.
So, Carolyn, you said that you're going to be possibly changing some rules so that there will be an issue with this. Will we get notification of that, or how do we find out about these potential changes?
Yeah. So actually, there was an ordinance amendment submitted to City Council. It's not scheduled for public hearing yet because of the whole transition from City Council to the new City Council. So it'll be posted. I can certainly email out the proposed text. It's, you know, on City Council, I don't know if it's posted yet, but I can send you the text.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. An R?
Yes. So...
I don't think they did, but we made a decision.
No?
Yeah.
So this is a parcel on Williams Street that has 100, just over 100 feet of frontage. It's an existing house, actually, that's non-performing for setback and on this one side, but they're creating another lot. And actually, nothing can happen on this parcel until that zoning change, if it goes through City Council. So basically, there are a lot of parcels in the city that, you know, are getting, are tripped up by this thing. So, but anyway, this is a frontage, a request to carve off this parcel and then keep this, I think this is a three-family, it's two or three-family. But anyway, there's the minimum frontage, there's an existing setback issue here with a bay window that doesn't currently meet the side setback, but they're going to take that bay window off so they can meet the setback. And the same with the driveway. They have to create, they have to show a new driveway to show that they're not using a shared driveway at this point when you create a new lot, because the existing driveway is on the other proportion of the property. But otherwise, the frontage meets the requirements for a new lot.
So this recommendation for approval was pending the ZDA, the zoning order change?
Well, actually, they're not doing it, they're not proposing any change now, but any, that would have to wait for that to happen.
So we need a recommendation to approve the A and R only, to move to approve the A and R on Williams.
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 I was right. Yeah. George?
Who's that?
Yeah, I'm confused. So if we're waiting for this zoning ordinance to change, why are we even doing this A and R now?
Well, because this is just creating a lot. They can't do anything new on this parcel until, but they're just creating the lot now.
So the zoning change is going to have any effect on the lot?
Right, because there are no changes proposed on the, in the structure right now.
But what about the frontage?
No, it's the same.
Zoning change about the size of the frontage?
No.
What is this zoning change about?
It's about pre-existing non-conforming lots and structures, and there's a statement that says you can go to the zoning board for finding if you have these non-conformities, but only if you're not making the non-conformity worse and if you're, if it doesn't trigger more parking. So in most of these situations, whenever it goes to finding any way, it's not creating a worse non-conformity, but when you're adding units, necessarily, you're adding more parking. Right. And that's anywhere. So even if you added an accessory dwelling to your single-family home, you're required to have more parking space. So it's just, I mean, it affects a lot.
Weird, it hasn't come up before.
I know. Well, I think, yeah. I mean, the only way I can, it's been there since I've been here, so I think we read and interpreted right over it because that's what the zoning board was for, you know, when you have a non-conformity situation, that's why you send something to the board because there's a request for a change. So, yeah.
Who, was it brought to light by the Allen's lawyer?
Yeah.
Who was that?
John McLaughlin.
Which, what development was it that brought it to light?
The Dewey Court.
Oh, the Dewey Court, okay.
Yeah, that's weird, that it hasn't come up.
Yeah, right. It's such a common issue.
Yeah. I feel like Perkins comes up a lot.
So this is another A and R on Locust Street. Oh, it's another one. Hold on. Oh, it's another, hold on. Nothing's changing with the uses, but it's really just a land swap, because there's an encroachment with parking. This is the Northampton Area Pediatrics, it's here. This is, there's a, I don't know if it's still, it was...
Green Mountain?
No, it's on the other side. It wasn't, it wasn't deed restricted horrible housing, but I think it was Mass Department of Mental Health, like group housing here on this side, but...
Just do something with this site?
You did something with Northampton Area Pediatrics to expand the parking, and so, and through that process, they realized, the survey showed that the driveway access for this was on their property, so they're just correcting it, so giving them the land, basically, that they're already trespassing over. So that's all it is, it's a tiny triangle swap, laying in the back of the property.
Any motion to recommend approval?
So recommended.
So much trouble with the one...
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Um, did I, did I say that?
No.
Okay, that's all I have for extra, hold on, let me just check, are we there?
We're there, by three minutes, we are there.
Which is highly unusual.
No kidding, I know.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Jessica.
Hi, Jessica. Do you have a thumb drive you wanted to help with?
I do, yes.
But that is so, you'd think that's so prevalent that, yeah, it is circular, but if somebody would have said, hey, this doesn't make sense before.
So while we have a minute, new guy, what's your background? Where do you, what, where do you go in your life?
Oh, right.
Yeah, that's a good question, about your therapy, what do you go in your life?
When did you know you were such a south?
How about just since you were 12 years old?
Do you guys not get departmental? Uh, I'm an architect, and mostly doing work in New York, mostly bigger, not usually really much, mostly institutional work.
Do you know your way around blueprints?
Blueprints.
Probably right to know.
There was a blueprint machine in my college, and I don't get work.
Great, awesome, thank you.
And if you think the zoning here is coming, then you should try getting something through New York.
I hear parking is a issue there, too.
Yeah.
I don't know, like, no.
But they don't have a good tree replacement ordinance.
I was just in there yesterday, and I was like, I was...
It's not a lot of land, you got to...
All right, we're going to jump into our scheduled 7:30 PM hearing for a site plan application by the City of Northampton for a parking lot expansion with solar canopy at the Northampton Fire Station, 26 Carlin Drive, Northampton, MAP ID 24B-86. Presentation.
Good evening.
Aye.
I'm Jessica Roberts from Time Bond, and I am here on behalf of the City of Northampton, Department of Central Services. David Pomerantz is here, as well as Dwayne, Fire Chief, City of Northampton. The proposed project is the Fire Rescue Headquarters Parking Lot Improvement Project on Carlin Drive. The fire station, original buildout, is 1998, part of the Carlin Drive subdivision, and in mid-November, we submitted a site plan review application, in part because the project requires site plan review as an immediate project for the creation of six or more parking spaces. The objectives of the project, if you don't mind me repeating through these, to keep on task, to expand the on-site parking to meet current demands, particularly during high-volume response times, and to improve the access to the on-site fuel tank for fire trucks, to create a new backup power supply, including proposed solar canopy over the parking area and battery storage, and improving stormwater management at the site. And stormwater management is associated with the proposed impervious area as part of the parking lot expansion. So the existing parcel is two acres, it's a zone highway business, it has frontage on both Carlin Drive and Northham Street. We are requesting two waivers as part of the project, because the parking lot expansion, you know, the site is two acres, limited areas to expand into, and so that would require a little bit of expansion into the existing tree belt, so we are requesting waivers from the 10-foot tree belt, and then there's also a 12-foot tree belt depth that happens to be mentioned in attach of 12. So we've listed that as well. There are resource areas at the site, mainly a bordering vegetated wetland on the western portion of the site. The parking lot improvement project will expand into the 100-foot buffer zones, but will not expand into the 10-foot no disturbs zone under the Concom ordinance. And no additional impacts to resource areas are proposed as part of the project. So in front of, on the screen, the existing conditions plan, the current parking lot is double-stacked, two rows of parking stalls. On the, I'll use the mouse here, since I don't have a laser pointer, and see if this will work. So the existing fire department has three curb cuts. The, the westernmost curb cut and the central curb cut are the curb cuts that are being discussed as part of this project. And you can see on the existing conditions plan, the stormwater basin will be constructed in this area, but there is an existing bordering vegetated wetland on the western side of the site. We have the 10-foot no disturb area associated with that bordering vegetated wetland with erosion controls here, and we note the 100-foot buffer zone of that stormwater, the, sorry, existing bordering vegetated wetland. As part of the parking lot improvements, there is proposed relocation of a diesel fuel storage area, so I'll scroll down to our proposed development description. The proposed development expansion is to 64 total parking spaces from what is currently at LE38. This allows for parking for high-response times and training, it also provides an improved turning radius for refueling. Right now, the ladder trucks and other trucks are pulling up to the diesel fuel station and then backing straight back out into Carlin Drive, so the proposal is to create better circulation for the trucks after they refuel, and relocation of that diesel tank will allow for that. Stormwater management, as I mentioned, a new stormwater basin to mitigate the impacts of additional impervious area. We are also proposing a new treatment unit on the existing stormwater system to improve stormwater quality and a, an existing drainage swale and drainage line that feeds out to King Street on the eastern portion of the site. And solar canopy and backup battery system, there is a, the, the project is basically occurring in, under two separate procurements. There's a public bid for the parking lot expansion and the associated stormwater improvements that are depicted on the site plans. And there will be an RFP for a solar developer to procure and install the canopy arrays, the battery backup, and the associated electrical connections. So the RFP will have performance specs for the solar and will require compliance with site plan approval and applicable zoning regulations. There is a DOR grant to install the battery backup system, so the solar developer is going to fund the purchase and the procurement of the array and the, and the backup system.
So just on that top, so the developer, so this won't be a city-owned solar?
Yes, it will be.
But the developer's going to fund the bill, how does that work? The, the developer will fund the building of the PV array, but it'll be a city-owned operated?
Will be responsible for procuring.
Be a 25-year, possibly a 25-year lease, Mark, for the developer to come in. Because of the way the grant is structured and state tax laws for procurement, the developer will come in, basically design a system to the performance standards, provide all the components, most of the grant we have will go towards the battery storage component, not the solar array.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Does that, does that second procurement include the structure to, to hold the canopy up, or just the panels? I don't see anything of it, how do you actually, like, where are the piers or foundations to hold the canopy up? Like, is that, how's that coordinated, which point?
So the current plan, as far as I understand, is to, for both projects to occur in parallel in spring and summer 2020. As part of the parking lot construction, there would be piers put in so that the racking in the solar canopy could be installed later, after the, that those racks are, where piers are installed.
Yeah, but, would you help all the, some of these parking places?
For the record, Alex Bagley, Time Bond, sorry for late getting here. In terms of the solar canopy, so the developer will be responsible for the racking system and the support, but the intent is to coordinate the two contracts, so that we're not putting in a finished course of pavement prior to, you know, those going in. The, the piers will be three-foot max diameter, so you can think of them as what you might have for a light pole foundation in the parking lot. So maybe some of the guys with the biggest trucks, guys and girls with the biggest trucks don't want to park in those spots that might have an intermediate support, but it's not going to actually preclude the parking space. Additionally, it depends on the design, you know, it'll be a performance design, but they may be able to span those bins, it's not that long of a span, but I'm not going to commit to that because...
How, Carolyn, have we had this before, where we're being asked to approve a performance design, which doesn't have the details that David's talking about, as far as how, how big are these supports going to be, how tall are they, what is this physically going to look like, because it hasn't been designed yet?
Yeah. No, you haven't. The one thing that you, I mean, to think about in terms of this project is that the solar panels actually over a parking lot are allowed by right, number one, so the planning board doesn't necessarily review any plans that would come in for covering a parking lot, because you'd still need to meet the height limits in that district. The other pieces is behind the building, so it's not fronting on King Street, so you're not reviewing, like, the whole package of a building, including solar canopies, which I think would be something different if you, if it were in front of the building, you know, between the building and the street. So you, I think, I, I think, and I noted in my staff memo, that probably the biggest issue is what's going to be visible from the street. Now, Carlin, it will be visible from Carlin Drive, but since we allow canopies over parking lot, and you, and we have height, you know, I think it'd be pretty tall in the highway business district, but I think the biggest issue is really those, the backup battery area that's actually at the front of the building, or essentially visible from King Street, which is the main corridor in this area. So this basically backs up to, you know, wetlands in the other building behind the strip of wetlands, so.
So because this is a site plan, that special permit, if we don't have a lot of say with respect to the PV array itself?
Right.
But the battery backup, we could, or would, I mean...
Well, I think you have, you want to, you, you can't deny the project, you can ask for specs on sort of what it looks like, so I think the backup battery is important because it's, like, you'd want to probably screen it, like, you'd want to screen any other utility bank that's in front of the building. The canopy is interesting, you haven't dealt with this before, however, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it is an item that in and of itself is allowed by right, without planning board review.
Right now, is there only one solar canopy in the city of Peterborough?
Yeah, I know, it's...
Commercial, you mean?
Yeah.
There are some in residential neighborhoods, but yes, over parking, I think you're right.
I think the issue with the canopy, it's not that it doesn't look good to the neighbors or something, it's more that the design that they're submitting, that we're being asked to review, is somewhat contingent on the design of this by right piece. Like, like, how does, like, pier that supports, like, the south end of the central canopy, like, coordinate with the fire trucks, fuelings, you know, I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done with your plan, it just, it seems, I mean, not 100% obvious that it just, you just drop it in there, and your plan stays the same.
Jumping ahead a little bit here, but this would be, we're calling this not in the contract, because the plans themselves are for parking lot development, but this would, this layout of solar panels would be part of the performance specification given to the solar developer. You, you need to have X yield, and this is your footprint. We do show the canopy extending over the relocated, where's my mouse? There it is. Extending over the relocated fueling island, because by stormwater, for stormwater reasons, we need to provide a canopy over the fuel island, and, and we discussed having a condition where, for whatever reason, that didn't work, that application, the developer would then have to put a more traditional canopy over there to meet that stormwater performance standard. But we would limit them to, to these zones, so your fire truck circulation is from the far curb cut around, you know, the parking lot, with this piece being high enough for the truck that beneath, and I think the height of the excess is 14 feet, which would fit over all of Dwayne's equipment, and that's below the max height for the zone in terms of your, your total height.
So that's the footprint that they've got to work with?
Correct.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that's the, the number of solar panels that, that will, in the end, be designed, because you're going to lose some because of the piers and so forth, and depending on where the piers go and how many there are, and...
Yeah, so your, your piers, like, the structural design of that will be contingent on what's going on with the soils here, how parking they actually span, and how heavy are the panels that they're actually going to procure. So those piers will, will be located at the, well, you can't see pavement markings here, but, you know, those, those piers will be located, you know, right in the, in the center lines of these, if they're needed in the immediate spacing, and again, that's going to be very comparable to a light pole foundation, if there are any parking lots that you park in, so that space might have that little restriction on a portion, and that's why you might see a smaller vehicle park in that particular space, but we wouldn't say that the space was eliminated from the layout that we're proposing.
The other piece is, just to clarify, there's no requirement that they build this parking, they're doing this in excess of, you know, to accommodate more vehicles, so it's not, they're, the board is not approving, or ensuring that there's a minimum number of parking spaces to meet the needs of the fire station.
Correct.
So if there's a loss of parking spaces, it's not really, it won't negatively affect their permit, because they're not going to be in violation of the zoning for that house.
So it's interesting, what came first, the need for the solar array and some laudable kind of energy conservation and moves towards sustainability, or the need for more parking, and then?
Yeah, you can ask the...
And then we said, wow, what a great opportunity, maybe we'll do solar, what?
Hi, David Pomerantz, Central Services. The grant that we got initially from DOE R was part of our resiliency and climate change adaptation work in the city. Through early work that we had done with emergency services, we identified that north, main fire is the Emergency Operations Center. So any incidents requiring activation of the Emergency Operations Center brings everybody there for various extended periods of time. So we applied for a grant for a solar system with battery backup. Simultaneously, Chief Nichols and I began conversations about where it was going to go, and he said, you know, we are crammed for parking, operations have expanded, and I said, let's see if we can put this together and do the same thing at the same time, two things at the same time. But we did get the grant first from DOE R, as part of our citywide... But we did get the grant first from D O E R as part of our citywide resiliency efforts, and now we're trying to address other questions simultaneously.
Thanks, Tim.
So, Tony, your concern was this battery, the battery that was going in the front of the building?
Yeah, because we don't know, we don't know what it looks like and there's no proposed screening. I mean...
Go in the back?
So talk about that a little bit. Current proposing a pad area over here, so North King Street is just off this inset plan, this is the southeast corner of the building, so car dealership is, is right down on this side here. I think it's 1140 square feet, it says on the plan. It's like the area we're effectively asking for to be allowed for this battery system. Again, the performance spec would limit the developer to that footprint. We, we selected this location because the mechanical room for the fire station is right here, and the backup diesel generators are right here in the primary residential service and control area. So it just makes the most sense from an implementation standpoint. We did look briefly at this location. There's a little grass swale in front of the fire station, you know, with the bays are right here, but that's, in our mind, more kind of in the public eye and disrupts the facade of that building, whereas this corner over here is already screened. You've got a nice set of trees there that are screening that as part of the original landscape of the facility, and we felt we could basically sneak the battery system in, require the developer to meet the screening requirements of the, of the zoning by law as part of his RFP, and replace, there, there's three trees that are, or two trees, two trees and two trees that are both in the other plant, that are in this area, and if he needed them, he would have to put them back when he was done with his installation at a, a tree that was of relative maturity, because these are tucked in the back and we want something tall enough to receive sun and continue to thrive and elation.
What is this battery, what does this system look like? I mean, I can see that it's 1100 square feet.
Yep. So they come in, they do, they do different things with them. I mean, the, if you're out on a, just a brownfield site or something, they'll put them in those Conex boxes like you see coming off of, you know, a freight liner. You don't necessarily want that in this location. The other option is like an outbuilding. It could look like a little shed or something like that that was simply built around the equipment and housed the equipment. These units have containment in them in case there's ever, you know, badly corroded batteries or something like that, and there's other emergency equipment in there, fire suppression equipment and things.
How tall are they?
I mean, it, not massively tall. I would think this wouldn't exceed, in my head, I'm looking at like a, a shed, you know, and like a, like a one-story type outbuilding that would be adjacent to this side of the fire station.
1100 square feet, it's a pretty big outbuilding.
It may not need to be. The 1100 square feet, we wanted to permit the size because it fit, quite frankly, geometrically with the line of the existing landscape over here and the back of the building over there, and we just, we didn't want to make it so constrictive that a solar developer came in and said, well, this is going to be, you know, $50,000 more because I've got to buy specialized equipment, because we want to make sure there's flexibility there for him to do what he needs. Maybe it's that it's placed, you know, it's placed in this portion of it or it's placed in this portion of it. It's not necessarily committing that this building is going to be the 1140.
You know, the pad would be coordinated with the developer as well, right? You're going to build a pad to match whatever they need.
Yeah.
These are typically wall-hung batteries, so it's like a mechanical where we know a wall, a bunch of stuff on a wall there.
Yeah, so open the door, exactly, we all lined inside the structure.
Behind the existing generator, there's a long alley that's open, and it's grass and pavement, I think. Why couldn't it go behind that generator between the generator and the parking lot?
It seemed constrained from the implementation standpoint. It seemed like it might be difficult to get into, I don't know if I have it here real...
Certainly. I mean, right now, it's a very clean, aesthetic-looking building. When you come down there on King Street, the trees, the benches, the firehouse itself, to put this up with a chain-linked fence to meet, just to meet kind of, to go overboard to help this developer, I would think it could go behind, you know, with the rest of the utilities.
This seems to be a water-type room, right? It's not...
Yeah, this is a contained, you know...
Right, we're talking about screening this water-type room.
Well, no, I think the wall is the screen. Is that what you're trying to say?
So, you know, one thing comes to mind is that there is, there is that existing wall, short brick wall, it goes right here, that ties into the architecture of the building and then the fence for, that contains the fire station kind of goes. I mean, the screening could be a replica of that wall built in front of this pad area, so maybe it shifts a little bit towards North King Street, but architecturally, you have that same looking feel that, that you had in the existing that you're moving.
So it all could be that, but as a city project, can't, can't the city just ask?
That's your, that's your job.
So we can put restrictions on the city too when they put that RFP together to put, or design the criteria on?
That's what we're asking for, is essentially a performance condition by the board that says you shall meet, you know, the architecture of this building and shall be that, that type of wall screening the enclosure for the batteries.
So why put it in front, right on King Street, if there's room behind that generator and towards the back of the building?
I think there's, there's not room.
I think it seems like, I think it's pretty, they say they can come in a lot of different sizes. It could be, you know, eight, eight feet by 12 feet, or it could be six feet by six feet.
But they don't know what the cost overruns could be if they constrain their, their...
Yeah.
If they don't necessarily constrain it, they could end up with an anticipated cost at the beginning.
What needs to happen for the, for you to get, it seems like we're helping you get a grant or?
They have the grant.
They have, they got the grant, so, I mean...
They have to spend the grant, huh?
Yeah, I got that. I mean, because I don't want to put an undue burden, but I guess I, I still, I'm just wondering if, and I hate to send the fire department back, but I'm just trying to figure out why it can't go in this, behind this space, because that...
If I can just address that, that back alley basically services, services the emergency generator back there, that's the only access we have to that. So if we put a structure in front of that, we won't be able to service that emergency generator that's in the back. And then there's also, right now, there's this whale that goes down through there that, I think it limits our space. It, in the front place, when we looked at it, it seemed like the ideal place to put it. One, that it seemed logical to put it where, you know, the, the services are going to go into the building, but that back alley is really tight back there, and with that swale and that emergency generator, I think it really, it hampers, you know, what we can do. So if we put anything behind the building, we really, there's a brick wall in front of that generator, we really just isolated that generator and can't do our annual maintenance and service on it and refueling of it.
Where is the generator?
It's right behind the building, right...
Where is it on the plan? Is it on the...
Oh, no, we're not showing it. There's a gap on the plan.
Why is it, you have, you have like one part of the building and then the other part of the building, like, why not show the whole building?
Yeah, we have the parking lot area, and that's surveyed, and, you know, initially we, the solar battery was going to go over there, so...
It's very hard to review.
Could we get, could we, is it connected to the inner?
Is it, so?
Um, you can't do it from there. Uh, I can try to put it up on the screen. Will you, you want the street view? Is that what you're looking for?
If you could just do the aerial top, we'd send everybody a good perspective of the site.
Well, Karen's looking at this, is there room in the, in the adjacent mechanical room for some of this battery storage? Like, you can put some on this side of the wall and some on the, I mean, to limit the size of the building.
Yeah, right, right now, the, the mechanical room is pretty tight, champ, with what we have in there for equipment, and I don't believe we could probably fit what we're going to, you know, what the design of this solar is going to be for battery storage.
You, you mentioned a couple trees in the front that if they had to take them down, they'd have to replace them.
Yes.
Those, that row of double trees are some of, if not the most matured trees when we started that implementation marching along King Street, and I would hate to take down those for this building. Were you referencing those trees in particular or...
There's three right here, so there's the double row.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's this little section, it's got three trees that line up with the raised landscape area.
So the same, the same maturity, basically?
Sure.
But they're not in that double, okay?
Yeah, they're not, it's not that front buffer, but it is that, it's probably the same plant, it was, it was part of the original buildup, so 98, and I don't know how mature they were when they were planted.
I, this is hard for me because I, I, in, in concept, I think it's great, doing two things at once. It serves a lot of purposes, it meets some of the goals we've been advocating, but approving something that we haven't seen and won't see, it's a kind of a leap of faith to a developer who we don't know who that's going to be.
You could condition that, you get to review.
Yeah.
Particularly the battery and the screen.
That's the, yeah, that's the biggest concern. Is how big that building's going to be, what's that building going to look like, how many trees are going to come down before, because of that building?
You could condition the developer coming with that, that outbuilding and demonstrate to you that, that it meets the requirements that you're looking for in that, that you can make, that can get included in the RFP, effectively make sure it goes in the way that you're envisioning it.
Yeah, 1100 feet is 34 by 34. It's a huge build. I mean, a huge outbuilding.
To me, I honestly, I think that's, that's a placeholder for, for something that isn't going to be that big.
Except that's what we would be...
No, I, yeah, all right. I think because geometrically, it lines up nice and neat on the drawings, it's good.
It was, it was kind of the available space and it was an attempt to make this, this flexibility possible. I mean, you know, similarly, the condition could be that those three trees can't come down, and that effectively cuts that space back a little bit, and, you know, the, the number stays the same, but if they can't take the trees down, they won't use that last 10 feet of their, 20 feet of whatever it is.
Does it make sense to continue this and give them a chance to come back with...
Well, I don't...
They can't go to with the developer.
We're not going to be able to produce the solar stuff that's, that's going to come through the solar RFP, which is not going to be able to go out unless there's a site plan approval in place to start this project. I mean, it's a chicken and an egg, right? Where you're stuck.
Pretty common to do a feasibility study of some kind before an RFP goes out, so you can get a handle on some of these data points. That's, that's what's done on most projects.
They have feasibility study in terms of yield out here and things like that, and how that ties into the grant. I mean, there's citywide studies that Chris has led the charge on.
I would imagine in 15 minutes with a solar developer, you can get a sense for how big a battery room you need for something like this.
We have a sense that it'll fit in this space, I, you know what I mean? I know you're trying to get it to a point where economics meet minimal footprint, I understand that.
Would a building that's 1140 square feet, is this what's represented so the trees would remain?
But that, there's three trees behind, there's a planting bed behind that row of trees, and in that planting bed, there are three additional trees that they're talking about. If it's that big, so they'd have to come down.
The ones north of the proposed battery backup there?
Right on the eastern edge of the proposed area. She do some trees.
My concern, if we condition this to look like the existing building, the existing building has a standing scene copper roof, you know, and so this would be the, the most beautiful battery backup storage building in Eastern Seaport. But it's right on top of, Carolyn's got the, the view of it, it's, it's right up front.
I mean, you could effectively condition that, the fence built in front of it matched kind of the architecture, like the, the brick fence behind it, it was tall enough so you didn't see the building from North King Street, but that condition of the building was...
That's a big brick, yeah. It may only have to be 18, I don't know, it's, it's big enough for someone to walk into, it's not a tall thing.
Is there, is there, chief, is there signage on King Street? There's, there's a low wall, isn't there? It says North Kingston Fire Station? Or is it...
There's a, there's a raised bed in front of the station, yeah, that's...
With the name.
That's above this area here to the north of the proposed area.
Okay, I was trying to think, if you, if you had a 10-foot wall.
You could extend the raised bed or something.
Yeah.
Can't bump that up, it's not letting it bump it off, but...
Okay.
Another question, does the RFP or the, the solar calculations, does it give a range of the output or are we, is, are you going to constrain it to a certain maximum output for the solar? That would, that would entail taking up all three of those parking areas? So there would be three individual canopies?
I think the intent would be, yes, I mean, the intent would be a minimum yield, and that's the proposal, I guess, we're kind of bringing forward, and so then you would allow the solar developer to put in, maximize his, you know, the amount of money he's going to make during his lease period. If, there was, you know, again, if there was a condition that it was lesser than, than that's up to the board, but...
So for the sake of argument, if we limited the size of the battery backup building, and that by default limited the size of the PV array?
Yeah.
Could go at it backwards?
Or if it limited the size of the parking area, then that would in fact dictate kind of the battery backup too?
I mean, to me, this is...
I don't think it's so proportional, because you could have 500 batteries on one solar panel, it just fills up quickly. I mean, that is quicker, I don't think it's one of them.
But this is more a site plan for parking more than anything, right? Versus the PV arrays, just, it's a, it's a separate project, it's a grant that they can do by right, and they're going to, they're trying to piggyback along this parking site plan review that we're doing. The only reason we're having this PV discussion is because we can't...
Well, and also, yeah, but the, the battery backup component is also changing the site. It was originally approved for the fire station, so that's another piece of it. I, you know, I'm, I can't seem to bump this, the, the screen up here and put the Google or the street view, but I had a question, because it appears that wherever this pad is, if you have a, let's say, an eight-foot tall shed, so if the planning board were to condition that, you know, a brick wall needs to screen the building and limit the height the building can be, then that can be, you know, maybe the roof of that shed pops up over that brick wall. But it appears that there are windows for the fire station that are in, that look out onto this area where the pad is, is that true?
That back corner of the building where we're talking about. There's a couple exterior faces.
Being the mechanical space?
Intake air.
It's like the mechanical room.
Oh, that's a pro.
Dark gray.
Yeah.
Those are to take air.
Okay.
I was, yeah, I mean, I don't...
They match the same dimension as the windows.
What happens to those, if you put a building in front of them, they'd have fixed...
It's like free air.
We leave a gap as long as, you know, I think it's usually a three-foot or something.
Else the building won't be connected, it'll be a standing wall.
It will not be connected, it'll stand.
I actually thought if you could, to mount connected, make it just look like a extension of the building. First of all, it takes care of one wall, you use less space, and then you could use, use the space and it might look like it was part of the...
Yeah, now the burden is going to be hiring an architect and, you know, properly renovating that building and getting, you know, all that stuff as opposed to proposing a site build, uh, you know, an outbuilding that can be handled through site plan, so just something to consider. I mean, that's burdened by, when the city spends billions of dollars building this thing and hiring an architect, they probably would appreciate maintaining that level of design.
But it sounds like we can, we can approve something conditionally, and then when there's a plan that the developer comes forward, they can come forward and make another application?
Well, but you'd want to be clear about what you want to see in that application, because you're approving a site plan, changes as it relates to the parking, but you want to give guidance on what that enclosure needs to look like so that you know...
They may will come back with a separate application for that enclosure.
Yeah, but the PV developer...
That part's not by right, is what I mean. The solar panels are by right, but the bill may include the batteries are not by right.
Right.
But, but the PV developer's going to be responsible for that building, they need to know what the parameters are going to be.
Right.
So that they can effectively bid on the project.
I, with the potential for, for, like, cost overruns and not being able to sort of predict, of doing it along the side like George suggested, I mean, would it balance, would it balance out the, the cost for more extensive architecture and design to make it pretty upfront and, and consistent with the, I mean, I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm just sort of wondering, like, yes, there's a potential for cost overruns if we put it in a footprint that proves to be suboptimal, but is better with the design of the building and off of King Street. What, could it just balance out if we end up having, if, if they end up having to spend more to do a more intensive sort of design process and the architectural process?
Well, I don't think you should decide that on behalf of, you know, the, the applicant, I'll say, in this situation. You need to treat just like any other applicant. So I think you can give, as the engineer said, give some performance guidance on what you're going to expect to see. So you could approve the parking lot and the canopy changes in the back, and that And that the screening for this battery backup has to, you know, have, if you want it to match the brick, then.
And then they decide for themselves, that's gonna cost us too much money, we're gonna find another solution.
Right.
Right.
And you could say you want to see final design showing that you complied with what you said are sort of the design performance requirements before they file for a building.
Well, but we can't, it seems that we're floundering a bit because we don't have enough information. I mean, they need to tell us what they wanna do. I mean, another, whatever it takes, another couple hours of work.
Exactly. We need to tell them.
I, to me, it seems that they need to do the work to figure out what will make the project accomplish what they want. And there's so many different options for how they could do that battery backup building.
But that's the thing, this is a design for the parking lot only. It's not, nothing about this is the design for the PV array. That won't happen until the RFP goes out to the solar array designer, developer. And so.
Well, aren't they applying for, to build the battery backup building as shown?
They're asking to use that area.
They just showed a footprint.
They're asking that that's where it's gonna go, but they're not, this isn't.
Then it also says the size. It shows the location and the size.
Right, so they're basically saying, it's like you review applications frequently where someone has a flag lot and it just has a footprint of a house. That doesn't mean they're gonna put, that house is gonna be that exact footprint. And it may shift, and that's okay as long as other aspects of the site are addressed. In this case, you know, you'd want to see a bit more than a footprint, given the location of this. So, you know, you could approve the plan subject to, you know, final sign-off of screening of the battery backup and you anticipate that it can't be taller than eight feet or whatever the, whatever you think would be appropriate in this location. And maybe it has to have a brick wall that screens the building, but you know, not where you should.
I think if we wanna treat this like every other, like every other applicant, I mean, which A, it's not, because this is like our city that we are paying for. But B, if we are, you would say, no, we need to come and show us, give us what, give us some thought of what you're talking about. Because we would not, on the main street of North Hampton, say, hey, we're gonna give you a thirty-four by thirty-four blank slate. Of course, you can build a wall, which we don't really know what you're talking about. And go to it and come back and tell us what, and we'll say A and A.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting you just give them a blank slate. I'm saying you get, you put the condition on that they have to come back for final approval of this screening. But it has, but here are the minimum things that they need to meet.
And prior to implementation, not building that, oh, that's good or that's not.
Right, in the sense that things happen to be in the same application, but I think if we approve the parking lot and say nothing about this, and say the solar's not part of this approval, like it's the same thing, but just there's less guidance on how they should come back.
We're attempting to show you a worst-case footprint of this building. Because if something other than the three rows, you know, something more than the three rows of solar or the footprint we've shown has to occur at the facility with solar, yeah, they gotta march back in here and get approval and likely from other boards as well at that point. But, you know, we're trying to show a worst-case scenario here to give the board kind of a maximum site impact perspective. And, you know, the more that, the more we can get conditioned approval on, the better we can write a performance RFP for our solar developer to come in here.
Given this is a parking lot application, really, I have a couple of questions up at the parking lot. Can you flip to the screen that shows the underneath?
I would love to talk parking.
Great. What is parking? So first of all, you have thirty-four, I think, now, and this is gonna be sixty-eight after this?
Yes.
So where do these numbers come from? Like, how did you come up with, is this, that's what fit on the plots? That's what we got, sixty, was it sixty-eight now?
Yeah, I was squinting for sixty-two.
Sixty-two, okay. Because was there any study done saying like fifty-four would work? Because part of it is, there's still a little bit of circular logic of we need this many spaces because that's what's fit in the pack. But if you actually don't need sixty-two, you need fifty-four, you could put the battery. You know, I know that the mechanical room is not there and all those things, but.
Yeah, we, I mean.
Was there any?
The directive really was to maximize parking because quite frankly, it's not gonna be enough, but this is what keep the site in there.
Okay. There's no documentation of like why that's not enough or like.
There's no.
I understand there's more events happening and lots of programming and.
There's no parking study. What's going on, you know, in addition to the emergency center being here? So in those, you know, off situations, yeah, you need a bunch of parking and in that case, you should be parked fine because there's critical function going on here. But there's a lot more regional trainings out, North Hampton Fire Rescue is supporting the surrounding communities.
But is this actually solving that? I mean, are we still gonna have issues with firemen parking in the neighboring lots and all those things even with this? Do we have any sense of that? That's what I'm asking.
With the expansion?
Like with this expansion, does that solve the issue that you're saying?
Yeah, that gives us the increased parking that we need. It's not, right now with just everyday functions going on, where the parking lot's probably almost three-quarters capacity. When we have, you know, large-scale events in the city, emergencies, that's where we really run into problems. And then we do host trainings, we do try to do trainings for our people and bring them back. And those are the situations we're running into that we just don't have the parking available.
Right, so for those, do you have any, like any sense of like what those numbers are? I assume for city emergencies, you could park at King Street if it's an emergency, right?
But it's not ideal for us to park there.
Sure.
Like this being, the fire station is an emergency operations center. A lot of the solar array came out of that two thousand and eleven snowstorm where we lost power for five days in the city. It was really to give us some resiliency and backup, because we worked basically off a generator for six days out of that station, running the emergency operations of the city. So kind of with that solar array and then having the number of people that we need to bring in for that, where we really ask every department to kind of send a representative, we're staffed up, we have dispatch in there. It really needs to hold those people.
Right, I mean, I think.
What is the number though?
Like, so if it's three-quarters full on an unusual basis? And then there's an emergency, so that remaining quarter is filled up. How much more do you need and does this meet that need?
That sixty-four would give us plenty for those large-scale events that we need. So a parking space is eighteen feet deep by eight or nine feet wide?
Nine in this case.
Nine, so if you have four parking spaces, two back-to-back, so you're at twenty, forty, so you've got a eight-hundred-square-foot space with four parking spaces. Could a building of that size, if you lost four parking spaces, if you had sixty instead of sixty-four, and we put a building of that size somewhere in the parking lot where it physically makes sense, so it's not on King Street, would losing four tilt the scales as far as parking and functionality and so forth? It wouldn't tilt it that much, Mark. I mean, if that's where it needs to go, that's where it needs to go. I think we're really looking at moving the batteries up so that, you know, they would be up by the building where the service. I mean, physically, that makes sense. I get that.
It seems like, what's the space just to the south of the handicap spots?
There's garages there, mechanic space.
That's an access.
Yeah, brush three mechanic space there, there's an entrance to the building here, there's a communications tower.
That's what those dots are, those are the mechanic space.
Those are bollards protecting.
Yeah. I see.
And then there's another set of double doors here, another door over back here on the alley. There's emergency equipment parked in the alley, stormwater infrastructure along this road, quite a bit going on, fortunately.
So with, so this pad, it's the egg-grade pad for fueling the truck, right, this rounded corner thing?
Right here, yeah.
That's, so the truck would park there and refuel off to the box?
Truck would pull in, this curb cut, and pull over. Now, some of the trucks are on a passenger side, some are driver's side fuel tank, just like any other vehicle, you know. So, yeah, I mean, it works from a turning radius for them to come in this way as well. So they could come in either way, quite frankly, but they would sit on this concrete pad and fuel up from that.
What's the frequency of that, refueling?
No, I guess that's a good question for you.
With our ambulances, daily.
So when there's someone parked there to refuel, and you're parked in one of the last three rows of parking, how do you get out?
You gotta, right now?
No, and under this plan.
We should have circulation right around the outside of the parking lot.
So, I mean, you can get around the vehicle. There's twelve-foot minimum here. You know, somebody needs to get out from one of these three, is what you're referring to. You know, they can go around that vehicle to get out of the parking lot. I think the other thing I understand about the fueling operations is really a shift chore, right? I mean, guys are already at the station, there's nobody coming in at that moment. They're fueling up there in that space, you know, when shift changes are going on, they don't have equipment there, fueling and stuff like that. Because it's just something they're doing while they're on shift or after a call or something like that. So, you know, the nature of the fire station operations does change us a little bit from what some of the normal parking lot considerations. Like, I understand that the concept of having a vehicle pointing the wrong way, partially obstructing the lane, but the frequency of that being an actual conflict is gonna be very minimal.
So there's a large issue about the larger ladder trucks having to back out onto Carlin Drive. But those don't fuel as often. Usually it is the ambulances and perhaps your own vehicle, things like that, right? The fire.
Right now, the ladder truck and our newer engines are backing out just because the curb cuts, the granite curves, we can't make the swing back in there. That's where we're struggling.
And they'll be able to make the swing in the future with this layout.
That's what he does.
All the way around.
I mean, I get the sense that there's a desire to approve this, but there's a hesitancy because of all the unknowns. And I'm wondering if there's a compromise somewhere.
Well, it sounds that the applicant's pretty willing to lose four spaces. That's, if the issue is kind of the architectural considerations of disturbing that frontage on North King Street, it sounds like the four parking spaces could be the condition.
I mean, to me, that's still a pretty good-sized footprint and I don't think the battery storage will take, will need that much.
Right, and effectively, if it needs more, they come back and they're talking about.
And it's so much cheaper. I mean, they don't have to have, as you said, whatever, copper.
Right, see, yeah, yeah.
Well, they've got a trench back to their equipment room.
They're trenching anywhere to get the batteries to the truck.
Yeah.
There's a conduit in this.
So we're taking the conduit to the socket line, you know, kind of being proper, but it's in contract. But it's not in all likelihood the same general contractor will run that conduit all the way to the mechanical room and then the trench attached behind the building.
So I don't wanna lose the parking discussion yet, adding these extra thirty-four spaces. Because of these events that happen not too often, I appreciate we have large-scale regional training events. But I think what we try to do in the city more and more is to have these shared parking situations. And currently, that's what you have with other lots on Carlin Drive, I think. So I'm not sure that it really justifies thirty-four more spaces. I was there twice during the week and today, half of the spaces were empty, which you say happens during shift change. And another time, not quite half, but fourteen of the spaces were empty. So, and I know when shift comes in, that would be how many men are on, and men and women are on in a shift. There's a change that happens and maybe we're talking forty personnel, some leaving, some coming in. That's probably a lot.
I think between dispatch and us, a shift change is probably thirty-eight, forty people.
Okay, all right, so, and they currently have thirty-four spaces, so a little bit more. So I personally am not crazy about having thirty-four more spaces here and going right into that wetlands area. And I think we're trying to more and more talk about limiting parking lots and try to move employees, especially city employees, the more creative ways of getting to work perhaps, rather than always being in a single occupancy vehicle and needing their own parking space. So I'd just like to raise that before we talk about just eliminating four spaces.
I agree with that, but at the same time, this would be the first city-owned parking lot with a PV canopy.
But they could still put PV canopies over grass. We've done that in plenty of areas. Most solar arrays are just in a field over grass. And that would help the whole wetlands, the mitigation for that.
I think it's, I mean, it's a little tough with the particular employees that are doing this though, because they're working twenty-four-hour, thirty-six-hour shifts, they're coming in at hour-hours of the night when public transportation's not gonna be readily available, they're gonna need to be coming in on an emergency basis. I, I mean, this isn't somebody, people coming in for a nine-to-five job.
There are occasions when they come in on emergency times, but it is pretty much a nine-to-five job. Maybe even working ten-hour shifts, there are occasions when they come in for emergencies. But mostly, they're on duty, they're not calling in on a regular basis, all these extra calls.
Yeah, but they're not on call nine-to-five. I mean, that's not the nature of.
No, no, but they're on call seven-to-seven. It's still.
Are we really impacting on those wetlands?
Well, let's talk, we didn't even really get to that land, that swale there and the rain garden, so to speak. So I'd like to talk about that for a minute. Well, listen, can we go back to the number of parking places for a second? Didn't I hear you say that you could live with four fewer parking places? And that would take care of the issue?
Take care of, yeah, this issue over here.
Of the battery backup area.
Yes, sir.
So that solves our problem right there.
Well, unless the, if parking's not an issue, right. So I don't know if that's a continuation and say, take that fourteen-hundred or twelve-hundred-square-foot footprint and put it somewhere in the parking lot. And if it goes down to eight-hundred square feet or whatever you think, you know, just from an architectural sense, will work, where it should land, and then come back and say it still meets the flows of the trucks, everybody can move, but it's not on King Street. And then if parking, if the parking lot itself isn't an issue, whether it's four spaces or five or six, whatever, how, so then that would free up our approval the second time around for the future developer. It would clean up a lot of issues that we have aesthetically on King Street. And then the only issues, what's up? And the trees would take, all that would go away, and then we just have to discuss the concerns.
And it could even be built partially on the, on the grass islands, peninsula's, whatever they are, to maybe only give up a couple parking places.
Is there a way that the board could conditionally approve effectively that the solar powered battery's not over there and there could be an administrative review to confirm that the bid plan, you know, was not advertising a solar area over there, that it was a four-parking space footprint, kind of in the ideal location of one of these three parking rooms?
I thought that was what you.
Rather than. He said a continuation, yeah.
Yeah.
So we would, we condition that now and say, subject to approval, find a better home for that footprint somewhere in the parking lot.
I mean, if it's in the parking lot, it's gonna be under the canopy anyway. You know, that's sort of covered. I think that you're, I think that's an easier thing to do, just as a condition, the backup battery should be in the parking lot. And it maybe doesn't even matter to say how many spaces it's allowed to take up.
Right, right.
It's however many, yeah, it needs. And then, and then it's, just as long as it's not up against the Carlin Drive, you know, end of the parking lot, maybe. Because that's another sort of, that's where the tree development.
And then would we, or could we say it must architecturally complement the existing building and give us a little little room? Or do we have to say it has to have the same brick?
At that point, I would say it doesn't need to because it's in the middle of a parking lot behind a solar canopy. And it's not next to that building. So I think the issue of being right next to the building on the front of King Street, then I think that's more of an issue about matching architectural details of that. What you're getting in the parking lot, you've got the fueling tank, you've got the, you know, the canopy. There's all sorts of things that are not like the building. So I think at that point, it almost, it disappears by itself without having to worry about that. And they can put, they can do a shed.
Yeah, a wide, mild-sided, you know, box or something like that.
That might be, I mean, there's a lot of funky stuff on the south and westerns building, you'll have seen it on those drawings. That new one, it would just be another one of those.
Right.
You could do a comics box set there if no one noticed.
So I think that's, I mean, I certainly would advise that that's an appropriate way to deal with it as opposed to.
It makes it easier for you to get.
Rolling on some walls, yeah.
And then, and then in terms of the wetlands piece, they do still need to go to the Conservation Commission. They did, DPW did review it for stormwater, so it's meeting stormwater standards for, you know, the runoff that's coming off the site. Conservation Commission will be able to get to it until they can see the wetland boundary because there's snow out there now.
So we will need it done on January night, but yes, we're not confirming the wetland delineation until there's no snow, which obviously this time of year, who knows?
Do you have any other comments?
They did, but it was mostly about getting final plans.
You can see the flags there.
So it's just, essentially, there were some questions about where the final location of the fueling station were gonna be. And so they wanna see revised plans. So their standard, that's the, their standard condition is, you know, thirty days prior to issuance of building permit, they want stamped plans showing, you know, the details for the items that weren't there. The utility connections, the backup battery, the solar canopy, that kind of thing. So, so that's it.
Okay.
They were, they did submit revised plans today to address a lot of the other DPW comments that DPW had up to this point. But those have been addressed.
To be clear, these are the revised plans that are on the slides. So you're seeing what we submitted today.
So a couple of, so currently where the retention pond is going, let's call it that, I'm not sure what it's called on your wetlands plan, but you recommended taking down about five pretty large trees.
Yes.
And there's, the city's paying into their own mitigation, or there's no requirement there for?
So, yeah, it's a bit odd with the solar canopy going in, there's no direct requirement to mitigate for the new parking spaces, which would typically be the tree placements. The trees are obviously part of the original landscape of this building. The trees are obviously part of the original landscape of this building. Effectively, there's no good place to put them, especially if you're going to put the solar in, because you can't shave the solar, you're not going to get any heat up. If it is a concern of the board, then some mechanism like that, whether it be trees on other city properties, paid into the mitigation fund, something along those lines, would have to be the approach, because, I mean, spatially, there's just nowhere to put them on this site, especially with the solar there.
So, on top of taking down those five trees, it looks like they're also clearcutting almost all the way to the 10-foot buffer, so if folks have seen that, there's a lot of trees still in there besides those just five, so they're, they're clearcutting right up to the wetlands line pretty much.
Supposed to be upgraded.
Huh?
Because that's getting upgraded, right?
Yeah, yeah, so what I'm suggesting is, is that if we reduce some of that 10-foot, some of that parking, the retention pond could come back this way, all of that buffer land wouldn't have to be taken out and cut down, you would have more, you know, again, I'm erring on the side of Conservation Commission's language now.
Yeah, so the Conservation Commission in this Highway Business Zoning District has a 10-foot protected zone on wetlands, which we've effectively honored with the plan. You're right, in the proper buffer zone, there are additional tree impacts and things like that, and, you know, so there'll be a tiered elaborations on that, but we are out of the 10-foot protected zone that is by the city, you know, with no trespass, and the Wetlands Protection Act allows you up to the 1-inch line effectively, so.
George, you can't, you can't really just take off 10 feet, because parking comes in 60-foot chunks, basically, so you're going to lose a whole aisle of.
Well, exactly, so that's.
Would it be up to the conscom to make that call?
Would it be up to us to say we could lose an aisle of parking, which would be nine spaces on that side?
Those two, it would really, they could say.
Then, in addition to the four that would suggest saying people come to a trade? We're basically saying no to their applications.
No, we're not saying no, we're conditioning it. Again, we have to look at these parking lots all across the city, and how much we're providing four spaces that really remain empty, they're losing all of their open space here.
Yes.
So, many of the parking spaces for 80% of the time are unused.
So, I could, I, here's the parking study, didn't recall this for you, but we discussed 38 vehicles during shift change, kind of the max daily operation. The training room holds 25, so right there, that's 63 parking spaces, but the trainings are not, it's not once a year, these are, these are once a month?
It's once a month, once every other month, it's probably six, eight times a year.
So, it's a regular occurrence, frequency, not daily, it's a regular occurrence, and you're dealing with people coming from other communities, so you're not going to be leveraging any busing or anything like that, unfortunately, you know, and then it's a fire station, so that bell rings, and they're calling three more people in, you know, so during a training, it's likely you're going to have somebody coming in to supplement a shift as well, so 64 actually is a pretty good number for, for the, you know, the need. It's the board's discretion if you feel that all of that is not warranted, but.
Is it open to a public tube to park there? For instance, of the physical therapy across the street, that oftentimes gets filled up, are they allowed to go into that?
Visitor, right? Staff and visitor.
It's staff and visitors. Right now, we have two electrical charging units that, in all honesty, are used by people.
I've seen them in the morning, I've seen the gym people go over, park their car.
Yeah, so those.
Get their bags out, and then they go to the gym, which I don't know if it was legal or not legal, but.
But those two spots are used exactly that way, they're used all day, from probably 6:00 AM till probably 8, 9 o'clock at night.
I mean, I would argue that they need the parking, because when I go there, people are circling NAC, and I go to the physical therapist, and I'm circling constantly, sometimes I park in the dirt lot to walk in, so I don't know if you monitor it or not, but in theory, there is a lack of parking with those two buildings, so if somebody trickled into this thing and they weren't going to get ticketed, towed, or.
Yeah, we don't, we don't actively, you know, go out and move people, I see people hard there, but.
But the reverse is also true, which is if they have a parking crunch at the, at fire station, then there isn't really overflow parking available, or certainly depending on the time of day, at the.
They're not going to NAC to park during the day, or at the.
The dirt, that dirt parking lot that you use is what everybody uses, the firemen walk from their own stations, just like you walk.
That's a privately owned lot, it's essentially a trespass to be parking on that lot.
It's used, you're correct, because they have to.
Right, you say no parking, exactly.
But, just to my board members, I'll say that the city is moving forward on this huge sustainability plan, and we're going to be asking residents and businesses to really look at, you know, the usage of cars and vehicles, and so if we're asking all of our other businesses and residents, you know, we have to really ask our city departments to look at that, too, that's all I'm saying, this is going to come up time and time again.
I want to disagree with that, I don't get up to asking, ever to see staff to, it's a different type of requirement, I think if people are going to get bagels or go walk on the treadmill, asking them to go walk or take the bus or bike, that makes a lot of sense, it does not make sense for firemen, I'm sorry, I can't, I agree with overall what you said, except that it's emergency services, it doesn't make sense.
They have a lot of beer that they got to bring.
And I guarantee.
And I think, I think this was driven by need, so they said we've got an opportunity to have more parking, how much parking can we fit here, and that's what this design reflects, it's the maximum, but now if we say, can't put the building here, it's going to be ugly on King Street, push it back there, maybe we address the big five trees, and there's some sort of mitigation to pay into the fund, there's no space to put it on the lot, but maybe we put those, the value of those trees somewhere else, which we've done in the past, so we, you know, we address some of the things that are important to the board, but at the same time, the city, the emergency services are able to address a real need.
I'm just wondering, you know, if, if we are, if this thing's going in the back, and we say you're, it can go, go anywhere except for, you know, on.
Except for the place you said you wanted to put it.
Except for the front and, you know, pitch to this side, I'm just, and it was in the back, I'm just wondering if naturally, they're going to lose more than four, four spaces, and that would sort of solve, solve the issue. I mean, if this is, if they're putting us in the back, I guess they're not going to put in the back, they're going to put in the front.
But the sustainability issue is not that we don't want parking spaces, you want more impervious, and then this building's not, your water doesn't.
Make it impervious.
It's a good comment about, yeah, we may end up losing more parking, I guess what we're asking is for you to approve 64 parking spaces, and obviously, we would not go below the minimum number of parking spaces, you know, there may be after some solar feasibility justification or need to take up eight, not four, and to your point, then you're losing them, but if the planning board grants the flexibility to say, you can have a 64 parking space lot, which we can't, because we've got to put the battery somewhere at this point, but if you can have that impervious area, then we can probably make the rest work through performance spec of the RFP.
And maybe you, a creative solar developer can hang all the batteries on the side of the building.
You never know.
You never know.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can, this is a fundamental municipal institution, and I don't think this is the place to start telling people they have to ride their bikes to work, notwithstanding, it's the sort of issue that we deal with and are heading in the direction of, but I, I'm comfortable with approving this and putting the solar backup building in the parking lot and moving forward.
So, a couple more miniscule things, you're removing a light, the only parking, are you installing, are you putting another light in the parking lot?
The solar canopy will be underlit, so that'll actually be much better lighting than they have now, and completely cut off, you know, in terms of down, gas, dark sky, because it's underneath and it's packed, so.
There's two big dumpsters there, and that's basically across from where I think the, the new filling station is going, are they going to stay there, is that going to impede the traffic?
Dumpster pad, I believe, is just off the side of the pavement down over here. Yeah, we didn't push this curb line down here, this is the existing curb line, and the dumpster pad is just beyond it, so.
There was a comment from staff about the pedestrian path from the parking lot to the station, there's no clear safe zone for pedestrian movement after you park a car, has that been addressed or discussed?
It was discussed, so the way we responded to that comment was to say, effectively, you don't have the typical, it's kind of what we've been talking about this whole time, you don't have the typical intermixing of pedestrians and vehicles here, you have shifts coming in, shifts going out, and sometimes all-day trainings spanning that, that operation, it's not commercial where there's always cars coming in and there's always ped car conflicts, but to try to improve it a little bit, we did, in the revised plan, clearly demarcate, I can't zoom in anymore, I apologize, we demarcated two visitor parking spaces over here, so that if there's anybody coming to the fire station that is not a fire station employee, their parking is effectively right here, all they have to do is cross the drive aisle, and they can go through the ADA pedestrian access route, so, so visitors do have a very clear path, you know, the concern about, you know, say firefighters parked over here, yeah, they got to make their way through the parking lot, to my knowledge, there's no staff complaints to the effect, and no, no incidents, you know, in the life of the fire station, so, you know, while, while the concern is valid from a general site and transportation perspective, again, kind of going back to the nature of this facility.
So, that visitor parking, that's where the people who are working out at the athletic center.
Exactly, so we actually.
Get their free electricity.
We moved the EVs right here, too, because we needed one more ADA stall to accommodate the total count of parking, so we're moving the EV station here, and those are also marked right up in this area, so again, kind of all those VIP spots have clear access to pedestrian accommodation.
Do those have, at the heart of it, so if you want to park in, that's that one on the west side, the EV on the west, so to get there, you go all, you come in and you go all the way to the back?
You come in and go in, yeah, so the, one of the, the local fire department vehicle for inspections locally is an EV vehicle, and so I imagine that's where that one will park, you know, most times.
I'm just thinking of, it's sort of an annoyance to the staff to have visitors coming and going, having to go all the way through the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, we could, you know, do you have one, just one EV vehicle?
We actually, just one.
Yeah, we could say visitor electric vehicle parking over here, I mean, the staff is used to this, I hesitate called circulation because.
A lot of the time, they'll just pull through anyways, that's.
And if you're doing a shift change, right, I mean, there's more opportunity for that type of pull-through behavior as well, so, we also added directional arrows at David Leiter's request, which, you know, while it's not like a crosswalk through the parking lot, it does provide more direction of vehicles and more expectation in terms of what a vehicle's doing when they're coming through.
So, other solar arrays we've permitted, we understand that there's a self-light for them, and eventually they probably got to be dismantled, recycled, and we've asked the applicant to provide some kind of escrow for them, I think, in order to make sure that the city's not responsible, the fire department doesn't have to recycle them themselves, does that make sense in this situation or for the RFP?
I think that you've got a 25-year lease, most likely, I mean, those details have been worked out, you probably got to have your life on the panels, the city is going to own these and financially benefit from them in the latter stages of their life, and therefore would need to decommission them when they were, when they were done.
So, the decommission would be by the city, not by the developer?
I'm not the solar guy, quite frankly, we, and unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that one on hand, I don't know if it's common to condition that in an RFP that they have to come back, I doubt it, because I think their responsibility ends at the end of their lease, so.
Which won't be their projected life.
Exactly, their projected life would exceed, so.
Because I think it wasn't so much about the panels themselves, it was more about the batteries.
Right, well, the batteries for sure, and they require a particular disposal, just like anything, just with, you know, EV cars, I mean, it's the same issue that you're, you got a life there, a battery that needs some daycare, so.
But that will be structured in the RFP.
That's what, so, would it be a burden to the city if, if we condition, so the wording in the RFP required that the developer at the end of the useful life of the batteries to, to dispose of them properly and not have the city have to do that, or does that work?
Provided it occurs during the.
Right, correct, right.
I think that should probably be not a condition of the permit, but in the, in the RFP, and I only say that because it is city property, the city would be responsible anyway, so it's not like you're permitting a private developer on the solar array where it's private property, and, you know, essentially, you're trying to prevent the city from having to go in and recycle something on private property where this is on public.
Because they'll just build it into the cost of the, like, the RFPs are that much expensive.
Right, since we'll, since the city will own, is paying with a grant for the battery piece of the solar project, not the panels, the developer will pay for or dispose of the panels, I have to check the award documents from DOE R and see what, what conditions they might have set, this is going back a couple of years now, so I'd have to get that award out and see, but we can certainly look into that.
But I guess it's a moot point, because it's city.
I just think, you know, as we said before, we have to treat every applicant kind of the same, so we want, we always want to ask all these same questions when it comes to solar arrays, because we're going to see more. My last question, I hate to bring it up, Alan, but.
It's never your last.
Chief, is there bicycle racks on the, on the lot right now? Because some people will come with a bicycle, if not, could we add something here while the parking lot's going under?
Yeah, right now, we currently don't have any good bicycle racks.
Do you ever see a bicycle come through the neighborhood?
We see it come through, people certainly use the King Street area, and we've seen it occasionally.
Could we, could we add them somewhere during, could you fit them in near that EV place, one of those islands, just even if it's two hoops or four, four bikes?
Typically, in the site plan, you know, if we can, we talk about trees, we talk about bike racks, things like that.
It may be appropriate to put them, you know, either here or over by the main entrance, but, you know.
You can decide.
But probably everybody uses them in the gyms.
Right, exactly. Yeah, put them closer to the gyms.
But that's funny.
Question just for the board, let me know if you think these are still applicable, these are the comments from staff, most of which we've already discussed, what does the solar backup look like, we need a detailed, the equipment and size as well as a detailed approval treaty, so are we collectively saying that if we condition it to have the battery backup in the parking lot footprint, that all that goes away?
Yep.
And we don't really care what it looks like, because it's in the back, can't see it?
Well, as long as it's in the back and not on whatever's.
Carlin.
Carlin.
So, that can be part of the condition, okay. Number two, what is the pedestrian path, we talked about that, number three, we need a detail of the PV canopy itself, height, et cetera, given that this is behind the fire station, the height and details may not be so critical, but is that a concern?
I thought it had to be a certain thing for all sections.
Well, there's a, there are allowances, so it would be zoning provisions.
Think you have, what, two and a half stories in HD?
I mean, it's, it's tall.
Are you familiar with the one at Whalen Insurance?
It's a very vast.
It's a massive, it's, it's a big boy, yeah.
Have you seen, there's like, I think it's an REI in Framing and Newton or something that has.
No, it's Framing.
The mall, right? I think Northampton should be proud to have a big solar array, it is along King Street's, King Street's ugly, I mean, solar array's great.
Are they two and a half stories?
No, not two and a half stories, but I.
What's wrong with seeing a solar in the sun?
But the comment about the.
It'll be the best thing looking thing around.
The, the base for the, the support is not insubstantial, if, if, using the one at Whalen Insurance, since that's the only, it's, it's big, and there's still parking on either side, but I think between the footprint of the battery storage and the need for the, the size of these piers, for a, for a canopy this size, you might lose more than four parking spaces, but.
Yeah, I don't think we should micromanage what the canopy should look like.
So, we're actually technically still in the presentation portion of our program, any other things that you want to talk about that we haven't touched on?
You've been listening, was there anything else in PowerPoint that we have not touched on?
No, but I was listening to people at the top of that sheet here right there, in case you want to run through the top of that.
So, I would say that, that no, I do not feel we have more to present at this point, I think we've, as long as there aren't specific concerns, we didn't speak directly to grade and drainage utilities, we kind of spoke about stormwater and different aspects, you know, there is a plan included here, maybe one thing I would point out briefly is that fueling tanks come with, you know, fueling tanks come with the inherent spill concern, so we've established the high point for the parking lot is effectively this 150 contour, and we've extended that ridge down to the curb line with a series of high points that descend in elevation, what this ensures is that the concrete fueling pad tips towards the existing stormwater swale, the existing stormwater swale is constructed with a clay interior, so you're not talking about potential fuel. about potential fuel getting into the ground there, like you would with the basin. So we're sending it that way, and then we also agreed in staff comments with Doug McDonald to put in a wetland grid separator before that line discharges toward the King Street. So effectively, we provided containment, secondary containment for potential disch...
Okay.
And I think the vehicle that handles fuel spills in Northampton is like part 30 years, so.
Did the city reach out to any of your butters, the car lot, the NAC? Did we notify them?
Yeah, as required, if necessary.
But you didn't have any conversations with your butters about this project or the solar panels?
No, I didn't. Okay, so we'll leave this, thank you. We'll leave this open for a little bit while we talk. So I've got the conditions I have, potentially, our DPW comments, the battery backup should be in the parking lot, bike rack, and then we talked, but didn't really nail down the tree removal mitigation for the five in the back that are coming down. Is there a desire to, how does that, the city pay the city?
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. Yeah, I mean, you know, the typically, you know, these aren't, none of them are over 20 inches, so there's no true replacement requirement. It's in site plan, you, you know, they're taking this out, obviously, the parking, but there are still, there's an exemption for building solar canopies not to have to plant trees, you know, in the parking lot, obviously, you should bring solar canopies up. So it really is very discretionary at this point, because there's not a true, there's no requirement that they replace those trees.
Okay. Carolyn Hafkin also mentioned, there's no requirement to have any, to meet any open space requirements on this parcel?
No, there is, but they have the open space, because they have the, it's, it's just through landscaping and high business district, yeah.
They do, okay.
We talked about the bike rack, how big of a bike rack to be on?
Four bikes is plenty.
So four loops or two loops?
Two.
Any other conditions that I have?
Is there a basic condition that the parking lot is, maybe this is in the obligation, is the parking lot only approved if the solar panel happens, if the solar system happens also? Or like, say the RFP falls through?
So good question. If they don't put the solar canopy up, then they're changing the site plan that you approved. A piece of that is, you know, we require landscaped islands in between all of those rows of, of parking. So if they didn't put the canopy up, they'd have to put, they'd have to comply with the parking requirements that...
So would they have to come back, then? Or would that be a staff?
They would have to come back, you know, if they just designed the parking lot with the, and complied, then they probably wouldn't have to come back.
But you already have the grant for the PV array.
Right, for the batteries, yes. So we need the array to use the batteries.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So would it change the number of the parking spaces if they had an output in an 8-inch tree island in all those, that would, there'd be something that...
Yeah.
So if no, if nobody responded to the RFP, the grant, they can't use the grant, the parking lot would have to be modified, they'd have to add those, the tree tops?
You know where there's, this is just a side, a side note, but you know where there's a good example of this kind of project is the Franklin County House of Correction, has these solar canopies and stuff like that, if anybody wants to check out, I think, what it might look like.
Been there.
Okay, any other discussion before we close? Public comment?
I move to close public comment.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So I have three conditions, DPW comments, battery backup in the parking lot, and a two-loop bike rack. So unless there's further discussion, I'm looking for a motion.
And, and, you said in the back and away from...
So would the, in the footprint of the parking lot, away and not adjacent to Carlin Drive?
Okay, I know it's not really public comment, but DPW comments include things that seems like we've resolved here without change, so do you want to go through those at all anymore?
Yeah, sorry.
I move to approve the expansion of the parking lot with the solar battery backup system within, within the, within its space, within the space of the parking lot, away from Carlin Drive, with two, with two rings?
Loops.
Two loops, and...
I don't realize plans.
And, and a final rise.
Shelby, DPW comments.
A second.
Any discussion?
Just one real quick, so I, I just want to say again about our process, that this is on a couple of times, we're going to set our, we're going to approve this and move forward without the conscom, having met on this, so if they run into anything, if they make any conditions, say 10 feet isn't enough, it should be 20 feet or 30 feet, that's going to change the footprint of our decision. So I just wish we could work something on with conscom, where something is this close, this tangible, that they would go first before us and make their determination prior to our, usually...
That's usually the case, I mean, why...
No, it's...
It's not, it's not, I mean, it's up to the applicant, and, right, David's correct, that if it changes the site plan, then they have to come back to amend it in front of you. So it's up to the applicant which place they go. We try to encourage them to come, you know, that's why we have meetings on the same nights, and they can theoretically go to Conservation Commission the same day, and you have the permit. They filed after snowfall, so they can't be put, you know, the Conservation Commission can't decide this at this point, so they can move forward, and they, it's really up to the applicant to decide which way, and if it hurts them in the backend, that they have to come back, that's what happens.
Well, I think they go to the conscom, and they say, look, we've been approved by the planning department already, and the site plan, they love the site plan, so...
It's approved by you, not the department.
The planning board, and that gives them kind of this, this extra kind of credential.
But wouldn't it be the same if you had it the other way?
No, not, well, the other way, they would, and they would have to show us in their plans, kind of a whole different delineation of where that other stormwater mitigation can go.
But I think she's saying that if, if we, if they approve it first, then they're going to say, oh, conscom won't say, we should, we should finally say that conscom should have a backbone and look at it on their own merits.
Somebody's got to go first.
All right, thanks for hearing me out.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Here we go. Thank you, everybody.